A little bit after 5:00, we're gonna start the caucus.
5:00?
7:00.
5:00 somewhere.
Whatever, I'm in 7:00. All right, first item on the agenda, we have, we'll get Sidney Best to come up first and talk about, she's here from Celebrate Pollin, to sort of update us on what's going on.
I just wanted to, I know two things that are new this year, and I want to make sure that you're okay with it. We are going to have pony rides out front, and we are also gonna have a reptile show on Amazon Eric. I did obtain their insurances, so that you could have it, and I also wrote a copy of our insurance for you to have.
Okay, great. Give it to Jay if you know what I mean, please.
Thank you. That's all I have, I just wanna make sure that you guys are okay with that.
Well, thanks for keeping us informed. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, next item, Mr. Moffey's here to address council on behalf of Yellow Creek Theater.
Mr. Mayor, Council, football, there's a rumor going around, Yellow Creek Theater wants to build a theater in the forest. I'm here to say, that's not gonna happen. I wanna give a little background of why I'm up at Creek Theatre. Last couple months, we've seen all these good things happening around the village, the foundation, the forest, building stuff together, people on the front of the village hall, people planting flowers, flags, everything. So a lot of people have been coming up to me, and over the last couple months, said, "What happened to the movies? How come we can't get, what are we gonna do to get the movies going?" So I said, "Maybe I'll check into that," and I talked to Tim, you've been great, by the way.
Thanks.
Thank you. Talked to members of Streetscape and Yellow Creek Theater, what's going to take to get that on? And, right now, the permit is up in Mahoney County in Westchester, waiting for a PE. Now, when I heard that, being four years at N. Town City School, I didn't know that we needed a gym teacher, because I had no idea what a PE meant. And, that stands for professional engineer. So, Yellow Creek would like to know if Council could, and the mayor, could use your power of persuasion, send a letter to whoever we use as a PE, to see they donate that PE stamp to the permit, so then Streetscape and Yellow Creek Theater can get the building up and run it. So I'm not asking for money, not asking for anything of that, but if it's possible that the mayor and council would represent a letter, form a letter, to the village of PE to get that stamp, and keep that, the spirit of teamwork that's been going on, get the movies up and running. I'd like to take my grand kick down in the movie theater.
Sam, what's the PE stamp needed for?
Pardon?
What's the stamp needed for? Is your engineering study required?
Physical engineer, just to give you the background on it, we had, the zoning variance was submitted for the pavilion down there, which was approved by the village. We then issued our zoning permit for it last year back in July, which it will be expiring this July. We then, they took, they take that permit down to the county, who then would also grant them, sign out on a permit, they handle the construction end, we handle the zoning end. The county, when you fill out an application for a permit, one of the things they require is a PE stamp from a physical engineer, saying that the, it's pretty much a review of the structure, and it's sound physically, structurally, to withstand, you know, all the forces that will be applied, wind, weather, snow, all that kinda stuff. That is the purpose of the PE stamp.
Well, is this something that Gary can do? He's our engineer.
I would assume that any engineer could do it, whether, what he would charge, or whether he would be able to donate that, or how that would work with the village.
Yeah, what's the matter with Dario?
Yeah, get here.
But that, but that charge is not on the village, correct? That is the person who's applying for it. Is that correct?
Generally, that would be the responsibility of the property owner. When it's written, the way our code is written, anytime we have to do anything engineering-wise to investigate, or pass, or permit anything, we would pass those on to the property, we would pass those charges, we hire an engineer to do whatever we need to do, which is not very often at all, but those charges will be passed on to the property owner according to the code, so that would be...
And I'm assuming Azazel Stone's the owner?
He is the physical owner of the property where the pavilion is going, yes.
So, doesn't it fall to the property owner to take care of their own business?
Well, I think if, in this case, that the whole village and other people, you know, enjoy it and take care of it, I don't think it's really too much, it's not like he's asking for a shutter, or put something to his property, it's something that everybody enjoys. As a matter of fact, I believe village council, I think, the village has had some money invested into it, over the assembly equipment and whatnot, my understanding, I may be wrong on that, but I could swear I thought something where the village has put some funds at some point in the Streetscape, in some way, shape, or form. But regardless of that, he's not asking, he's, it's gonna cost them some money to put up, they're gonna put the money to the pavilion and permit, they're just asking to see if it's possible, in the spirit of cooperation, teamwork, and whatnot, the village council might be, might be able to use the power of the mayor, power of persuasion, to have the engineer, PE donate his stamp, and look at that.
My first thought that comes, it is a wonderful asset, and I'm sure a lot of people will look forward to seeing it come back, and it's a great thing that you're doing to advocate on behalf of the community. And, from where we sit, however, from where we sit however, there might be a conflict of interest, and I'd have to defer to our solicitor on that.
Yeah, I don't know that the village could lend itself to a private endeavor. I realize you've said a couple times, you're not, you're asking for money, but what he's asking is for our help for him not to spend money. And so, that's the flip side of the same coin. You know, our engineer is on retainer to the village for village purposes, and I don't know that it would be appropriate for us to request him to spend his time to help a private endeavor. So, you know, I have to agree that to the extent the village theater was an asset to the community, and to the extent that you clearly support it and want it, I think that's great, and I don't think you'll go find too many people that would disagree. But, you know, I just don't know that it's properly before council right now. I think lawn would be tasked with making sure that the plans are in accordance, I think lawn would be tasked with making sure the permit's in place, before he could even ask for something like this. And I think you know, and I think you'll agree with me, that it was removed in the first place, under court ordered agreement, because he's...
I'm aware of that.
...is in violation of law.
I'm aware of that.
Okay. So I think we need to make sure everything's proper.
When I spoke to someone at the building department, they said everything was up to snuff according, they're just waiting for this PE stamp. And that's it, I think, Tim verified when they come. So that, he's done everything up to that point. They're gonna be spending the monies to do that, and I just thought, I don't see what a conflict would be, I'm sure, over the years, if you went through the minutes and agendas of past councils and mayor, they've spent plenty of time considering, doing things for, and I don't consider it a private enterprise, I consider it a public enterprise, the real benefit from...
Well, we'll agree to disagree on that, then. And, you know, I don't know what past councils did, or what past solicitors approved, but I would tell you that I'd be reluctant to approve them requesting that public funds or public efforts be expended under these circumstances.
There'd be, there'd be no reason that Gary couldn't do that on his own.
Exactly.
Okay. So I would reach out to Gary Dario with his relationship with the village, make sure he understands it's nothing, we're not blessing it, but he may, he may help you out, is what I'm saying.
If he can do that on his own, even though he does have some sort of relationship with the government, that's no...
As long as we don't reach out to him, I'd have to come through. Okay? Excuse me, Mark, do we have prints and all that with the...
I don't know, Joe.
No, we don't.
We don't have nothing?
No, we don't receive prints for the, for the construction end of it, that would be the county accounting, and I, so far as I know, a formal application was never submitted, they came in to find out what was needed for the formal, and they had, you know, what kind of, I have not seen the plan sketches or drawings, but without the PE, that's required for the submitter for the application, so I don't think they formally...
Let's talk about Gary. You know, he's a professional engineer. Okay, if he don't have any plans or anything, how come he make a judgment? Besides, we don't, we don't agree on all this stuff.
Well, on his end, for any person that was going to stamp, they would have to have the plans to review the plans, and...
Yeah!
Yeah.
So that basically means that he's gonna have to work with the owner?
Correct. Right, well, by stamping it, he's then saying that it is physically sound and can withstand whatever, you know, in his professional opinion, it is, you know, okay to construct to withstand snow load, you know, weather, all that kinda stuff. And, you know, therefore, you know, that's why he would need to see the plans, because otherwise he would be liable, so, you know, it collapsed due to the snow load, or what have you, or whatnot, yeah.
Tim, have we agreed on where this place, this building's gonna be erected?
Yes, that was what the original zoning variance was for, because it was in the riparian setback, that's why it was in violation. But council did approve the, or the zoning variance board did approve it, and a permit on our end was issued, the village did everything within its area of influence to make it happen. We issued our permit back in July of last year, and it's one of the, in my report, I mentioned that permits are good for one year, so they're, they're approaching their one year on that permit, in which case they would never have to re-permit after that if they don't, you know, kinda get the ball moving and get...
What's their deadline?
The permit expires July 13th.
Some constructions to serve, and then?
Construction technically should start six months after, because that can void the project also. That one's a little bit more lenient in this case, because it was constructed and then it was torn, you know, I think council could maybe turn a blind eye that way, but with the one-year deadline, that's, you know, not saying that they could not re-apply and be granted a second permit, but, you know, that is one of the reasons for, you know, having a, you know, a deadline, but that option is available, should they not meet that deadline, but they won't go forward without a PE stamp with the county, I do not believe.
Were there ever drawings of the PE stamp on the last one? Didn't Ted Hydeman do something with that?
Well, I've been told that Ted Hydeman no longer maintains his certification, he can no longer do it. He was kinda on board to do the PE stamp for it at one time, but he currently, it's a monetary issue to maintain your certifications and all that, and continuing education, that kinda thing, and with him being retired, I, he has let his, I've been told, not by him, but that's what I'm told, he has not done it, since he no longer maintains the certification to do PE stamp.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, Mrs. Cernick has a few things. Your resolution, repealing resolution number 06-17, requesting the honor of Mahoney County of Ohio certify the total current tax valuation of the village of Pollin for municipal forest .25 mil new levy, and declare an emergency.
And that's exactly what it says, this is the, this is the proposed ordinance for the forest, first time, .25 mil. We are asking for an estimate of the total current tax that will be raised by this .25 mil. This is the smallest levy I've ever seen in all the years that I've been working here. So, it's not gonna be, we realize it's not gonna be a gigantic amount of money, probably about 13, 14,000 is my guess.
14,000, probably.
Okay, and it's a good start, you know, so that we can start getting some things taken care of down there that need to be done.
I think the maximum allowed is .30, so this really isn't far...
Not far, probably.
...from what the maximum is, yeah.
Okay.
Ordinance pending, ordinance number 1509-17, permanent appropriations, and declare an emergency.
Okay, this one is shuffling some appropriations that we had made in our budget. Nick, do you have something you can add to this?
Yeah, it was just some line items that were a little short, so we're adding some money to those. The only one that is probably a little confusing is the very last one, the street levy fund, where we are increasing the payment to another political subdivision, which are the county auditor fees of $2,040, and then we are funding the transfer outline item, so, once the OPWC-17 resurfacing is done, we'll be able to transfer those monies from the street levy fund into the OPWC fund, and then we'll be able to, you know, pay those out. So that's the only thing that's a little needed, but the rest are just, you know, climate adjustments.
All right, resolution to declare an unnecessary levy attacks in excess of the 10 mil limitation, general fund 2 mil renewal levy, and to declare an emergency.
This one is our regular operating millage, general fund, 2 mils. Do you know what this generates offhand?
2 mils is roughly $114,000. And what this resolution is for, this is what goes to the county, you know, Board of Elections, here to get it on the ballot.
Four-year or five-year?
Five-year.
So this is one of the ones that keeps us going, this is a regular operations.
And the last one, resolution to declare an unnecessary levy attacks in excess of the 10 mil limitation from the Pollin Municipal Forest, .25 mil new levy, and declare an emergency.
And that again is for the proposed forest levy, and let's keep our fingers crossed.
All right, Mr. Donovan, is there a reading?
I'm gonna go back to Jay. Oh, you're in the background, I'm sorry. Okay, well, it's, I don't know what else I can say about, about this, we've honed it both from input, from within, and from without, and we're ready to do it, this will, this vote will tell us whether we can do a levy or not.
In the status of the Barnhouse, is that you, Joe, or is that you, Jay? Is J M...
That's me. Either one of you. I was hoping it was Joe.
All right, it's Joe, so go ahead, Joe.
Jay? Yes, sir. You're fresh on this yard. Now, that house has been in its construction, it's in poor condition, for over eight years. Now, the neighbors wanna choke me, they think I got something that I can muscle in on here, but I can't. Everybody says, "No, you can't do this," we've had the Board of Health, we've had everybody there. Now, you gotta do something for us.
Yes, sir.
Enough is enough.
Well, all kidding aside, when I saw J M. on there and that, I thought it was me. But I'm glad you did bring it up, because that 12 Pollin Manor was on my to-do list, and actually, I had sent out a letter on May 18th to the owner, but it came back, and as I learned, it came back because, it came back as undeliverable, because he doesn't even have a mailbox or a house number on the house, so the post office wouldn't deliver it. The other, so, I live right around the corner, I'm well aware, I dug out Tony's old file, and they have photographs going back to 2012 of this house in various stages of construction, I guess we'll call it. So I had written to Mr. Barnheiser, asking him about the status of his permits, the, in a realistic timetable for conclusion of the work, and as I went through what Tony left me, and as I thought about it, I realized that perhaps he's been given too much control over the process, as far as us asking him when he thinks it'll be done. So I think on our end, it's time to turn the tables and just provide him with the deadlines of when we expect things to be done. And that goes hand in hand with something else that was on my to-do list, which is, at some point, talking to council about enacting administrative penalties. And what I mean by that is that the way it stands now, if somebody's in violation, they have to be ticketed, it has to go down to Struthers Municipal Court, and, let's face it, that's probably not the most important thing going on in Struthers Municipal Court. So there's long time delays, things get lost in the shuffle, but if we were to enact administrative penalties, like a number of cities around us have, it would allow council or committees to impose penalties, sometimes $100 a day, if you're in violation. I know Youngstown uses a three-month system where the penalties are $300, $600, and then $1,200. And if they impose those penalties, those are eventually certified to the tax abstracts. So, usually get people's attention, and I think that those things will allow us to move quickly. So, Mr. Major, it's on my radar, and I'm going to take action here to get this thing done.
Okay, what kind of action? Listen, about eight, about eight years, right, since we had a discussion with this guy, right, Tim? Now, if he's bankrupt, and it's just sitting there, what can we do? We, what, what can you do? Was there a bankruptcy? No.
Oh.
Nothing I know of, but I know we don't have any money, as far as I know.
Well, that's part of the investigation, I guess, that's something I'll look into.
Okay.
I see in the past that he had used a lawyer.
Oh, yeah.
Since I can't seem to get a letter into his hand, I'll bet you I can get a letter into his former lawyer's hand, to see if he's still involved, and I plan on a face-to-face and a heart-to-heart with Mr. Barnheiser about...
Very good.
Yes.
Good, because I've done that a long time ago, with his lawyer here, and, you know, but, we foolishly give him another permit, after one expired, another permit, another permit, I think we've given him four permits.
He currently does not have a valid permit.
I don't think so.
There you go.
I've been serving over here in their own degree.
And that's a little bit of a catch-22, I guess, because we're telling him to do work, but he doesn't have a permit. So that's something that I'll sort through with him, and eventually have a discussion with, with council or the committees that I need to talk to, but they, he's been on my mind, there were a couple other legal matters I wanted to put to bed before I took this on, because I don't wanna get distracted. If I go after this guy, I wanna make sure that, that he's my focus and that we get this done.
Not if, but do it, do it.
Yes, sir.
And get after him, because it's not right. Okay, okay, so the ball's in your court now.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, a couple administrative things we have to talk about. Our next council meeting is July, June 20th, excuse me, and Linda, you are not gonna be here, correct?
Correct.
And Bill and Leah are not gonna be here, correct?
Oh, they're just meeting.
We don't have a quorum, so we have to cancel that meeting. And then the next meeting in July is July 4th, which I doubt, maybe it won't be for that. So, should we change that to July 5th, the Wednesday?
Sure.
And Bill and Leah cannot make that, but can everyone else make July 5th that they know of?
I think so.
I think so. Joe, are you good? July 5th? And Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll do July 5th, which is a Wednesday.
So we...
No meeting on the 20th of June, because we don't have a quorum.
Okay.
And then our next meeting will be July 4th, which is a Wednesday.
Okay, July 5th?
July 5th, it's a Wednesday, instead of July 4th, Tuesday.
I'll get that in the indicator.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Um, Tim, you wanna give your zoning report?
Uh, zoning permit's issued, 30 block Autobahn Road, new house going there, quite sizable permit, over $5,000 for that permit, 968 Leve Michigan Barrage, and then a home business application on 21 Massachusetts. Yesterday's architecture review board meeting was canceled due to no new business, the next scheduled ARB meeting is set for Monday, July 3rd, 2017. The zoning variance board is scheduled tomorrow, Wednesday, June 7th, 2017, 7:00 PM, to formally approve or deny the variance request for Stop &amp; Shop Gas Station at 57 North Main Street, I think we're all pretty familiar with that one. It was originally, the original variance board kicked that back down to ARB, because what he was asking to do altered some of the agreements he had with the architectural review board, so they wanted ARB to sign off on his landscape of plot plan before the variance was granted. He has finally taken care of everything with ARB, so far as submitting and getting the plan approved, and so now we need the zoning variance board to just meet again and to actually formally grant that variance, pending any questions they may have. We had a couple, we almost had it canceled, we had two councilmen who weren't able to make it, but Linda Cernick is gracious, lady, said she would sit in, in their place, and so we were...
And she will go for it tomorrow?
So that can go forward. There is no planning commission meeting scheduled this month, the next scheduled meeting of the planning commission is Wednesday, July 19th, 2017. My investigations over the last few days, we've had some high grass, seven more, we've talked about that one before, notice was posted on that one, and no response, I believe the gentleman that owns the house is in assisted living, I do have an address for a son out on, that I'm going to try and follow up on, but we have posted a notice on the house, and it was not cut, so the street partner went in and cut that, two hours will be assessed on the tax duplicator bill to the owner on that, I'm working with Nick on the format, and that will have to be approved by council, once we get that all worked out, and that will be submitted that way. Across the street, 1016 Cortland, notice was given on the high grass there also, gave her seven days' credit, so she'll have the weekend. 57 Centennial, I had a complaint on that, that was cut. I also had a complaint, 343 North Main Street, from Trash 3 at the curb, that was removed. Looking into, I had a complaint on the utility poles up here at the top of the hill by, just past Riverside, on Main Street, the ones that were damaged in the accident years, well, years, quite a while back.
Couple years.
Yeah. And I did meet with the line supervisor from OE, to see what it would take to get those removed. They have transferred all of their lines over to the new poles, they have, can't remove the existing damaged poles until the phone company and the cable company get out, remove their lines, so I'm following up with that, and I talked to Tim also, we may need a little higher plout than mine to push that forward, and, but I'll make some calls on that to see if we can get that done, and there is also, also a underground service on one of the houses, that goes up and ties it on the pole, that will have to be moved, and that will be at the expense of the homeowner, so I will contact them also. So that's on those. Seven more's place, I'm talking with Jay, there's an exterior maintenance issue on that house, it's the same one with the high grass, there are some raccoons getting in through the back, porch has fallen in, with no response from the owners, like I said, I'm working with Jay to see what we can do to get that repaired. 219, sorry, left out the South Main Street, that's the front porch one that we were discussing previously, right across the street here, the front porch has been removed, the steps that were dilapidated, and the painting work has been, scraping that, has begun on that one.
730, please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Rule call members. Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Sett?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Cernick?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Yaff?
Here.
Okay, make a motion to suspend the orders of the day, and go back to the zoning report.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
All right, also received a complaint on 57 Centennial about a back deck issue, they'd go up and take a look at that, I left a notice with, on the door, I haven't been able to get a hold of the owner on that one yet, there does appear to be a hole in the roof over the back deck, that could possibly allow animals in there also, so we'll wanna get in touch with the homeowner and see what his plans are in correcting that. 132 Marion, exterior maintenance, gutter is down, that was a, it is an insurance issue, and I did talk to the homeowner, and that work is scheduled slated to begin Thursday, was drawn out because of the inspection needed to be done by the insurance company, so on and so forth. I also had an email complaint on 21 Massachusetts, I, that is on the back of my zoning report, is the email that I received, along with my response, there is a gentleman living at 21 Massachusetts... There is a gentleman living at twenty-one Massachusetts, has a home business, landscape business. He could take better care of his property, I've been there several times. The gentleman that emailed me kind of, I think, was under the impression that the village is not doing anything. As you can tell from my response from my email to him, I have served him on three or four different occasions with zoning violations, all of which upon my follow-up were corrected. Contrary to his email, there is, it is not legal to operate a home business. We do have some, several in Poland. But there is, you know, zoning ordinance you have to follow, so I do monitor that property. The homeowner is very willing, you know, if I notify him, he does correct everything quickly, but I can't keep him from violating zoning ordinances, but, you know, he does seem to fix them and repair them. He does have an exterior maintenance issue, a siding issue on his garage. He has purchased the siding, and he assures me that will be going up within the month. And so far as, like I said, in my response to him, I've served him three different notices three different times, and the issues that he were violating have been corrected. So I responded to the gentleman that initiated the email and outlined what I had done with that property, and we'll go from there.
Excellent response, by the way. Very good.
And then my last item was just, we already talked about, was the Pavilion for the Elementary Theater.
Great job.
Good job. Motion to approve the zoning report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion to go back into orders of the day.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting. Question of the waiver reading and approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion to go back into orders of the day.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting. Question of the waiver reading and approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion to go back into orders of the day.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion to go back into orders of the day. Okay. Our next police meet then will be Wednesday, July 5th at six thirty.
Streets will be July 18th. Okay, boards, ARB, Tim says it's always the first Monday of the month. Planning?
Planning will meet the next time, Wednesday, July nineteenth.
Board of zoning appeals? That's meeting tomorrow night. What time is that, Linda?
Six thirty?
Seven.
Seven?
Board of appeals?
Board of zoning appeals, that's the one you're filling in for tomorrow?
Caucus at seven, meeting at seven thirty.
Oh, that's the one that Tim asked me about, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. What time is it?
Seven.
Seven, okay, I'll be here.
Caucus at seven, meeting at seven thirty.
Okay.
Thank you. Western Reserve Joint Fire District? Next meeting is June fourteenth at seven o'clock, or seven thirty. Seven thirty, right? Seven thirty, yeah. Forest Board? Zoner here? Yes?
It's Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of June, seven thirty here.
Okay. And High Memorial?
Next High Memorial will be July twentieth, which is a Thursday at nine a.m., location to be determined.
All right. Report from the mayor, I have a few things here. Got a notice, I'd seen where everyone else did, Aqua House Quarterly Cover Forum will be Tuesday, June twentieth, six p.m. at their building on South Avenue, sixty-six fifty South Avenue. So everyone's invited to that. I got an application in my box that Russ had given to me for another lady to help out in the office with Paula. She's going to have some, she has some vacation time coming up in San Diego, the other one helps us, does a good job, but she has kids out of town, and she's not here a lot. So this lady is Susan Gallard, and Russ knows her. She'll be filling out an application, and she said she was available immediately to start working for us, so something you guys want to consider. Better to have someone else as a backup, so we don't have to shut the office if we get in line. Who is that? Uh, her name is Susan Gallard. Russ knows her. Mrs. Sweeney was here before, about a month ago, and there is, so the Center of Disease Control, if anyone's been by the mall, there's those trailers that she talked about already. And this is from, this is to Bill, actually, but we wish to invite you to the National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey Open House Media Day. Be the trailers on June twelfth, from nine to noon. And the survey is being conducted by the Mahoney County Centers of Disease Control and Prevention and National Center for Health Statistics that teaches us about the health and diet of people in the United States. The open house slash media day is an opportunity for local officials and media to tour our operations and view active exams. So we're allowed to go in the trailers and see what's going on. Is that right? That's nice. And the last thing I have to like to thank, and I hope I get the name right, Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, is it Friends of Historic Poland, is that how the group is?
It's still, it's still in the changing mode.
All right. Well, whatever it is, you guys have done a wonderful job. And John's a member, Phyllis, Shutey, Charles, Roeburg, and there's several others. And if you look around, Village Hall especially, there's a lot of work they've done with stating the doors, planning things, fixing things, and I appreciate that very much. That's very nice.
Well, thank you, our pleasure.
Yes. That's all I have.
Make a motion to accept the mayor's report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from fiscal officer?
Okay, I'm going to circulate around the list of bills to be paid for your signatures, and that's basically the only thing on my report. I did hand out the long legal size sheet to you. What this is, it's a summary of what the village has as, you know, levies. The village has a general fund three point two, which was voted on initially in nineteen ninety-nine, and we started receiving that money in two thousand. You have a general fund two point oh mil, voted on in two thousand and two, started in oh three. You know, police, which is a one mil levy, that was voted on in oh six, and that started in oh seven. And then we have our street levy, which is a two mil, that was voted on in fifteen, started in sixteen. What the sheet does is it basically lets you know when they will be up again. So you could just kind of follow this as a schedule, give you some idea. I went out as far as twenty fifty, so when we're not here, someone will have something to call. But that's just a little bit of information for you.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
That's it, and the report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got all that stuff for Gary, you're good on that?
Yes.
Traffic signal stuff, so we're terminated.
Yes, we're terminated.
Yesterday was the deadline. All right, Tim gave his report. And caucus, report from solicitor?
I would ask that council adopt my comments about twelve pole manor as part of a report. Also, when we met last, there was the question of what was labeled the alley between Alburn and Johnston Place. I did look into it. Preliminary, there's nothing that indicates it is a street or an alley or anything dedicated by Polon Village. There are four, possibly five houses that are adjacent. I think I commented last time that the way the current surveys read is they actually go to the center line. Now, that's not the way they're marked on the GIS, the Mahoney County Global Information System. It does show if they're standing alone, but there's nothing that indicates it's government property. So I kind of stopped there because if I were to start going to pull deeds or surveys, it could possibly incur a cost. And when I say a cost, maybe between a hundred and two hundred dollars if you really wanted a firm answer. But as we sit here today, I would say that it's very clear to me that it is not a dedicated street by the village, and that there's no formal responsibility by the village. Where we go from here, I would ask you, as my clients, for direction.
You know, this comes up every few years.
Yes, it does.
Something about it one way or the other. So I guess it would probably be best for us to know all the details.
Okay, I'll dig into it a little.
Because it will, it'll be discussed again, I guarantee you.
And we did go to the county to ask if it had been ever a dedicated street by the village, and they have no record of that.
Right. Because if we're doing something on private property, we need to know that if, whatever the circumstances are, for us to do any action, we need to know what's going on. You agree?
Agree. So, all right, I'll dig into it a little further. And then finally, the only other thing that came up in some side discussion, well, there's more than side discussions. At the last meeting, the prohibition about medical marijuana was tabled. If council wanted to schedule something, I'd be happy to do a more detailed presentation. Interestingly, as I looked at it, and prepared a little PowerPoint if you really wanted that much detail, it may effectively be banned in Polon Village by statute. And why I say that is because a portion of that, of the new section, says that these marijuana-related businesses can't be within five hundred feet of the traditional prohibitions, schools, churches, libraries, parks, and there's a couple more. So given the size and where things are situated in the village, it may effectively be banned already.
That's right.
See, the township banned it, it was on the paper today?
I did see that. I didn't see it in the paper, so I told me, but, you know...
We won't need to take any action in that situation?
I don't want to say no because there may be a hole in the map, so to speak, where theoretically it could go, but again, given the layout of the village and just thinking about it, I can't really think of a spot in traditional business areas where it could go. We're just too small for a cultivation license, even a small cultivation license. A dispensary or processing site, possibly, but I just, I can't see it. So if you're in mind to be better safe than sorry, action by council banning it would be my recommendation, but keeping in mind that it may effectively be banned already.
So we might want to just do it for protection?
Or at least open up for public comment, you know, and then take action.
Right.
I think it would be wise, although I have suspicion where public comment would go, but always good to see input from the public.
Maybe set a public hearing?
It's kind of mull us over for a little while. We're going to be off for a while, there's going to be some people missing. I hate to get into anything that's, that could potentially be this...
Sticky.
Sticky, until, for another month, I would say.
It is tabled, and the only thing the state is doing now is considering the applications for cultivators. And as I said, there's simply no place big enough in Polon Village to even be considered.
Maybe we'll discuss this, we'll put it on the agenda for the second meeting in July and see, take the temperature of everybody and see what...
Yeah, I mean, as long as we don't have to be worried about anybody coming in, then...
At this point, no, no one could swoop in. Because the rules aren't even in place for processing and dispensing. Oh, there's some general rules from the statutes for the actual, we don't have to worry.
You're all right with holding off on that?
Yeah, I am. I mean, we're a small town, I really don't think anybody's going to come looking to do that here, but you never know, and, you know...
If it brings any comfort, I mean, I will say that the statutes really ratcheted down on this business as far as oversight by the state government and access and rules and reporting. It's actually a very well-written section of revised code, and you know, just, for example, you know, with the dispensaries, you can't just walk in. You have to have a medical marijuana card before you can even get access, so there's no one's going to say, oh, no, sorry, just looking today, just browsing. You can't even get in. And there're going to be standalone sites from pharmacies, so I, at least as things exist now, I can't see Walgreens being a medical marijuana dispensary under the way the rules are laid out now. So we do have time.
Okay.
And that's it.
And motion to approve the solicitor's report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from Chief of Police State Street Commissioner?
Focus department, submitted.
All right. What do you intend to say?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from engineer? Reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage audit, and insurance.
Not a whole lot going on right now, this time of year.
Legislation and policy?
Nothing right now. Your report?
Police committee?
Police committee met tonight, and we're talking about doing an executive session at our next meeting, which has been tabled now for the twentieth, so I may ask for one to interpret tonight. We'll get some police matters.
Okay.
We'll see how the meeting runs, let us know. That's all.
Motion to accept the report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Streets, sidewalks, and drainage committee? Bloopers?
You do have a packet that you can share, it's from the newly forming Friends of Historic Polon organization. They were kind enough to provide great details, a little laundry list of things that they're working on. I know Charles was hesitant, he didn't know his schedule, and I don't know tonight if you want to give a verbal report or if...
Oh, no, we're still quiet on ready, yeah. I just want to keep you a little...
Okay, okay, so you have a packet of things that they are working on, and as they move forward, we'll keep you more continually informed. But if you have any questions, you know, you can speak directly with Charles, and I'm sure he'll fill you in before they're ready to address council formally. Okay? Tim? I'll give this in your email?
Thank you. Motion to accept this report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Reports from boards, planning commission?
We're still getting much closer to historic district legislation and ordinance writing, so we'll keep you updated as we evolve over the summer months, and hopefully have something by our meeting in July, since we're not meeting in June.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board of zoning appeals? Architecture review board? Forest board?
Eleanor? Well, I believe, good evening, I believe at our last session of council that Mark Thompson was here and addressed what is in the foreseeable future. He was not able to be here this evening, but I think if we reflect back on that, that should keep you up to date. Do you have any questions of me? Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
opposed.
High Memorial?
High Memorial had, will meet in July, so we'll get the minutes till then. But we did have a service on Saturday of Memorial Day up at the Presbyterian Church Cemetery. There was a Stevenson, and it was a relative of Michelle Weaver-Bova. And she did all the research because he did not have a marker on his grave, and he was a veteran and everything. So she went through the proper channels, worked out really nice, beautiful marker up there, and we had just a little service, and it was really nice. That was High Fun.
Motion to accept the High Fun report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Western Reserve Joint Fire District?
We're not there.
Okay. Reports from special committees? Communication from residents? Any new business? Any old business?
Any opposed? And Western Reserve Joint Fire District?
We're not there for it.
Okay. Reports from special committees? Communication from residents? Any new business? Any old business?
Mrs. Gillette.
Just raise your hand.
Mrs. Gillette, um, Russ has been working on, he's got something for us on it, taking care of our senior citizens, you know, the, we started a long time ago.
The caring.
Okay. So we'll get together and get this thing rolling. Okay?
Okay, motions, ordinances, and resolutions?
Question. Do we need to make a motion to authorize Jay the ability to follow up on the Barnhiser, or is it just part of his realm?
I don't think we do that.
Okay, all right.
Correct?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
That's why it makes us the big salary to do that.
In the job description, Jim.
Good question.
Okay.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
This is my first council meeting I've ever attended, so I don't know the right protocol. I just had one issue that I wanted to bring to, I think it's the street or zoning people that have to worry about it.
Okay. What is, could you stand up and tell us your name, where you live, please?
Sure. My name is Pam Burns. I live at 5876 Polon Struthers Road. I'm that side of Water Street. Is your coming by to, I'm concerned about the residence at 10 Water Street, the tree that is across from the sidewalk. It is a very bad obstruction for anyone trying to turn right. A lot of people don't even stop and turn right on red like they're supposed to, but they get out almost into the middle of the intersection and then just gun to go because they cannot see from the obstruction of the tree. And I'm just asking for the removal of the tree. And the, in the winter, it's not too bad, because there's no leaves on the tree. You can pretty well see. But now that the trees are full and everything, you cannot see at all. So I was just wondering, I talked to the police department last year about it, and I, I didn't notice anything done. So I thought I would check. I did some research on the website for what you do, so I just thought I would check with the, I don't know whether it's zoning or the street or...
Our zoning guy left, but I'll, I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow and tell him. Now, if you're coming towards 224 from Water Street, is it on the right side or left side?
It's on the left side. It's that first, first house on the left-hand side.
All right. I will check, get with him tomorrow and see what we can figure out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, motions, ordinances, and resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion to weigh the three readings to pass by emergency, a resolution.
Second. Rule call?
Uh, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for a resolution, repealing resolution number 0617, and requesting that the Mahoney County Auditor certify to the Village of Polon the total current tax valuation of the Village of Polon for a 0.25-mill new levy in excess of the 10-mill limitation for the Polon Municipal Forest, and to declare an emergency.
Second.
Second.
Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
Again, I would like to weigh the three readings for an emergency ordinance for an, an amendment to permanent appropriations.
Second.
Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
A motion for an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1509-17, permanent appropriations retroactive to May 1st, 2017, and to declare an emergency.
Second. Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
Motion to weigh the three readings to pass by emergency, a resolution to levy a tax.
Second. Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
This is the one for the general fund renewal. A motion for a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation.
Second.
Second.
Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
Motion to weigh the three readings to pass a resolution, emergency to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation.
Second.
Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
Motion for a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation. This is the new levy for the forest.
Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Sernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
Make a motion that be temporarily or part...
He just handed it to me. Motion to accept the application of Sue Gilro, I guess?
Gilard, I think it is. I'm not sure.
Um, as a substitute for administrative assistant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions? Second and third readings. Okay, this is the third reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter 1062 of the Polon Village Code of Ordinances Governing the Polon Municipal Forest. Second. Rule call?
Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jash?
Yes.
Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion that the bills be paid?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions from the news media? Remarks by council, Mr. Sernick?
Thank you for all your hard work on this ordinance.
Thank you.
I know you've really put in a lot of hard work.
Appreciate that. Mr. Sett?
Second. Thank you all.
Mrs. Jash?
Do you want to?
Do you have, that's right. Um, Mrs. Wilson?
Welcome back to Joe. Good to have you.
Thank you.
Very good to have you. And thanks to all of you for working with the community and with Mr. Donovan here to provide a really healthy outlook on the future of the forest.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you all. Everybody had input into this. It's just, I kind of put it together, that's all. And there was a lot of input from, from the community as well. So it was a, it was a group effort. Thank you, and I think this is going to be better times for the forest.
Mr. Major?
I thank you all for your kindness. I'm glad to be back. And again, Bill, you did a heck of a job. And Mark, I'm glad to see you here.
Listen to Joe. Mrs. Jash?
Love seeing you back, Joe. And to the, everyone that was involved with the Memorial